How are you doing? I'm good.
I'm better, I told them.
I am good. You got it. Oh, good, thank you. Okay, good. Okay, very good. I would anticipate, I haven't heard from him. If you want to go ahead and get started. Well, wait a minute, wait, here, here's something. Three, four minutes away. That was four minutes ago. So he'll be here just a second. Okay.
A few minutes.
Right. Okay, good. How you doing?
I would like to call the meeting to order. Everyone's present on the board. Do you wish to stand for the pledge of allegiance and dedication?
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in thy name.
Lord, we come for you tonight, we just, uh, Lord, just thank you for so many things. Lord, here is, we're entering our Thanksgiving season. Lord, help us to never take any of your many blessings, Lord, to us for granted, Lord. We thank you for the way you blessed in our school district, Lord, the way everything's going so smoothly on the academic side and activities and athletic side, Lord. We've had a lot of success on, on the gridiron this year, Lord. Have the first game of the playoffs here at home this Friday night. Lord, we just pray that you'll be with the Chargers, Lord. You give us the victory, Lord. Just help us, just keep being successful as a school district, Lord. Be with us here tonight, Lord, as we go about the business of the school district. Just pray that every decision that's made, Lord, is within your will. In Jesus's name we pray.
Amen.
Have you approved the minutes from the last board meeting?
Make a motion to take the minutes.
Now, motion approved.
Second.
Second, Dr. Brown. Any discussion? All in favor of last board meeting minutes? You have adoption of the agenda?
No changes.
All right, need a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
I make a, make a motion to approve the agenda.
Brown.
Second.
Second, Ms. Collins. Any discussion? All in favor? You know what? All right, old business. The next board meeting will be Tuesday, December tenth, twenty twenty-four, six o'clock. Tuesday, December tenth. New business, uh, item A and sixteen section land.
I have nothing tonight that you guys are taking action on since we said. Again, the delinquent list is clear and have had some agreement on that. At least there's some different ones that may pay for the end the last month and all. If you had one, uh, come off the list this time and paid what was the name of the car for the rent payers, uh, but he is wanting to sell his mobile home to some lot for somebody else. So that'd be, well, we've been looking to assign these ways, but he is remaining delinquent on some, on the property taxes. So I thought he may have to get all that, all of it, and then he would stand and look over and begin assigning this, uh, this list. So he would like to give back.
With us, uh, to, uh, to, to that end. So hopefully by next month, we'd be coming to you with an assignment after he, again, pays all that length of tax and, and that's due in full.
We have a policy. Uh, policy D, fiscal management. There were no, no changes or revisions. And number two is item L with facility expansions. No revisions, just take two votes. All right, item? Yep, facility expansion. Item B, any motion except those two with no changes? Second. Any discussion? All in favor? You know what? All right, ELC, use of artificial intelligence. That part of the item, that L. All right, moving down to item C. Second vote?
No, uh, ELC.
Perfect. All right. Use of artificial intelligence. This is our second vote. That's right. Okay. I need a second vote before we review that last meeting. I need a second vote on the artificial intelligence policy that we had the last month.
So. So.
ELC. ELC. Any discussion? All in favor? All, you know what? Item C for personnel. Personnel one.
To be in compliance with Mississippi Cove thirty-seven-nine-twenty-one, if you related to any of the following personnel to be considered and voted upon, please recuse yourself from the school board meeting till a motion and vote is made. I'd like to make the following faculty recommendations for the twenty twenty-three-twenty-four school year. And if you refer to personnel one on your laptop, then you're going to see there's one person who's in there, Lauren Carpenter, lead teacher, and we need to back up and pay her for being lead teacher at previous year. We're all working. Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Yeah, I believe what happened was that she was appointed as a lead teacher and performed those duties in previous year. And what did come to our opinion? Coming in from the principal, you know, nominated to recommend that person for our, as a lead teacher. And I'm not sure exactly what happened, but it did not, it did not happen last year. The principal says that she did perform the work and she was not paid and she never brought that to anybody's attention due to she didn't realize.
Right. The principal brought it forward. Yes.
So, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, so that's non-pro-tom, correct?
You'll have to explain that, I'm, I'm not sure what you're.
Well, what that is, is that you're correcting a, a, uh, that the board approved her as a lead teacher. She did not get paid, she earned it. So rather than having her sue us, we're going to go back and pay her for that money that, uh, not that she's going to, I don't really prefer that. But, but y'all have the ability to go back and correct that clerical error because she was a lead teacher. Now, if you had never approved as a lead teacher, it's a new problem.
So, so again, so this is non-pro-tom, meaning so we're going back to, to correct something that's happened?
From previous year, yes.
Right, okay. And, and the board did approve her for that lead teacher position? Because that's not what I heard.
No, again, uh.
So the board did?
Honestly, I don't know that she was approved from previous year.
All right, well, you, you need, we need a widget and, and I mean, you, but now, then let me, let me, uh, make this correction. If she, if she actually performed those duties at the recognition of the superintendent, I don't know where the break now happened, maybe, maybe you, you know. But if she performed duties, it's, it's like anything else. If someone performed duties that we received the benefit of her performing those duties, then we owe her that money. Now, she, you know, she makes a demand on us, or she can, we can just work this out with her. But y'all are definitely, you're documented here, so I'll, I'll go know what you're doing, so, um, I don't see a problem with that.
So again, my question is, so we're going to go non-pro-tom? We're going to pay her for a duty that she performed that the board didn't agree on her performing that duty, correct? I mean, whi- which is fine, I mean, I mean, if she.
That's mine.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if she, if she performed the duty, then that's absolutely fine, we want to give her her money. But I just want to be very clear that we are going non-pro-tom and we're going back in time to pay somebody for a job that they did when the board didn't approve.
With me, due to that year.
I just want to, I just want to make sure that, that we're clear. I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't have an issue with it, but the board didn't approve it, but we are going non-pro-tom to approve it and pay this lady, correct? I mean, is that, is that what's on the form? It just been here. Just want to make sure that.
Yes. That's what's been asked. All right. So I need a motion to personnel one for Miss Carpenter's lead teacher for the twenty twenty-three-twenty-four school year.
Second.
First and second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Bill, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make the following faculty recommendations for the twenty twenty-four-twenty-five school year. If you look at personnel two on your laptops, then you're going to see recommendations of several people. Um, you're going to see security, custodial, secretaries, um, twenty. If you look at the effective date, then you're going to see that that's going to be coming up, you know, down the road just a little bit. And you can see one of the, one of the people, Chris Miller is a teacher, math teacher and a coach and has been at the high school for a number of years. And Beverly Waters is a teacher that's been with us for a very long time and has done, has done quite well. And we also have a couple of assistant teachers who are going to be retiring at the end of, um, you know, at the end of the school year. So we recommend that you approve personnel two, please.
Motion for personnel two?
Summer.
Ms. Collins, second. Kevin. Any discussion on personnel two? All in favor? You know what? All right, uh, item D, release student to Choctaw, Kansas.
We have, um, the mother, Emily Mitchell, has requested, requested that her daughter Zoe Hammond be released to Ackerman High School in Choctaw, you know, high school. She, um, you know, to the school district there. And, um, she's asking that her child be released from here to be able to go there.
Need a motion for release, Stephen? So.
I'm a.
Second, Dr. Brown. Any discussion? All in favor? You know what? Item E, superintendent's report.
Okay. Okay, um, on the academic side, our schools are doing quite well. We've been able to make a lot of gains. We have some things that we're working on very, very hard, you know, as we finish the first assessment. And we have, and we have some progress that needs to be made. Anytime you take an assessment, then you go back and evaluate what you did, how you did, what can we do to improve? Now, that's where we are now. So we're trying to figure that out. But we're working very hard to make things happen well. In regard to facilities, the middle school is up for tonight. Will be presented tonight for the work to be done on the middle school. The newspaper building is something that we have been having lots of conversation about. about, and, um, we have removed asbestos as well as mold from the building, so now we're ready to start putting back. Well, the first step is gonna, is gonna be with, um, getting plans drawn and that kind of stuff. So we're going to be working on that. We also have the money that has been released or is in the process of being released to the school district to be able to handle that. And, and thank, a very special thanks to the legislature that has, that has helped us with that greatly.
See that, well, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, it's like five million dollars, it's, you know, and it's really going to make a huge difference. And so a very special thanks in, in the work of Lydia Chassenol and also Kevin Ho Ran, who has been so active in helping to push that through. The newspaper facility, again, is something that's going to be able to help us in trying to get not only our students ready for the future in industry, but it's also going to be able to be used somewhat to help community members that might have an interest in improving their skills in other areas. And so we're excited about that, we're working very closely with the industry, and we have, we have that in place. So that's a little about academics and about facilities, and, um, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, moving on to item L, which is our CSI, TSI update.
Well, we're still on CSI, the middle school, school improvement, also TSI, high schools, school improvement for just the English two kids. I'd like to point you things out. One is, I only, it is one subgroup, and the subgroup is students with disabilities.
It's ten subgroups that they look at every time when they check this out for school improvement, and the only one that we've ever been identified with is the students with disabilities, and we're working on it. And this group contains about four percent of the entire school population, and, um, and I, you know, and we're doing, we're trying to come up, we're coming up with a plan now, a different plan, a, a lot of it's some of the same, but we're adding some new things to try to improve and, and work in this area. I do want to point out, as far as the state goes, if you look at middle schools that were in CSI, nobody came out statewide. If you look at high schools that were in the TSI with English two, no schools came out statewide, so nobody got out of it. I mean, it, it's, it's not an easy deal to get out of. But we have added a few things, uh, different already, and we're still working on things to do to improve for our kids. But at the middle school, they've blocked classes in the English, where they put, where they go to two different classes for the English, and that's for the, you know, the merge in thirty-three, which that's called the group that's in the bottom thirty-three, trying to give them extra help with English, that's one thing. The I-ready, we're doing two lessons a week, forty-five minutes. Um, special education teachers, we've made sure that we match them with their strengths and what they're teaching, like if it's a strong math teacher, we put them teaching math, ELA the same. Um, and all special education teachers only have one content area and one grade level to concentrate on, it only makes one lesson plan to work on. And they've also added a new program, it's called Delta Math, it's an online program. Students can look up, you know, if they, they can do a problem at home and it can look up and it'll show them how it works, so it can help them without being at school, so that's a, that's a good thing there. With the high school, it's a little bit different, they, with the high school, last year what we were looking at was proficiency. And really proficiency, we did, we did okay in it, and we would have come out, but at the end, MDE added a new kink to it. It was, they added a growth component to it, and that knocked us out, because it went back to three years of average, and it knocked, the average was pretty low with the three year average. We actually had a very good average last year with growth, it was eighty-nine point one percent. So we think what we're doing as far as what the high school is working, uh, we do have a lot of, some new teachers in ELA, and so we're adding professional development for those teachers, and, uh, we've got a consultant coming in, working once a week with that, and working on classroom management content, and we've added an interventionist. And so we're going to continue to work on things, and I'll be reporting on this each month.
What was it?
You what? Sorry.
What we add, like.
We added an interventionist. It's just going to be a tutor that's there, three days a week, and they pull out the kids out of that group, because there's thirty kids in the group at the high school, and so they work with us. Okay. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. All right, item G, the approval of the middle schools, that group can bid, so this is for the added classrooms.
Yes, on October the tenth, I believe it was, when we had a bid opening right here at the central office, and, uh, and you see there, if you, Kevin's got that open, there were five of bidders that we had, so we had pretty good response, you know, to the advertisement there. And, uh, and you see, and of course, it was three different, uh, thing, parts of the project that was bid. If you look over in kind of the, the, the middle of the page is the base bid, and that'd be for the classrooms, the ten classrooms. The next, that add alternate number one, that would add the, the, all the administrative and the entry, uh, to the, to the building, along with another couple of classrooms. And the third, and the second alternate, um, bid there was for the awning that would run the length of the school, basically, along Jones Road. And what I've done, you see, those were all bids separately, but if you look over to the left there by each of the contractor's names, I did add up all three of those parts of the project. And you see, these are in order by the low bidder, and you see that the low bidder was a KT builder, uh, from Greenwood with a bid of all three of those parts together of seven million four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And you'll see after him, there are, you know, three other bids there with, uh, that, that's, what separates them is what, less than four hundred and fifty thousand dollars? So we felt like we got some, uh, pretty good bids there. There's one outlier there, the fifth bidder, that was nine point three million, which is a little out of, out of the pack, out of the running there. But, uh, again, low bidder, KT builder, the same contractor that has recently completed our classroom addition at the elementary three five school. So, um, another thing to look at, if you guys want to, I know you're looking at those bids and seeing, again, and, and the way those were bid, you know, you don't have to do all three of them, you could do, oh, the first one, or the first one, the second one, or, or, or all three, you know? But, um, again, the numbers that I'm saying, the low overall is going to be KT builder. And you can't pick and choose between the, the contractors for the different parts that were bid. You know, you couldn't get one to do the awning and one to do the classrooms, you know?
As far as, and just start, start the.
That, I'm not sure what I want to be the start, what was going in the winter time, you know, so that could be the slowest construction. So we'd have to, you know, have to prove it be denied, we'd be working on contract to bring back to the board next, uh, month with a number of days, you know, and, and a schedule that would, that would be out there. If you look at that next schedule that I have there, or related to it, and I look back at it, it may not be that easy to follow, but I can just kind of tell you what we currently have.
There was one more we had, we might expand it some. But currently, you have, uh.
This in, in the capital projects fund, we have, we got six million three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, that's what's in there right now. And again, that was some of that ESER three money, you know, that was able to move into there. And then our note proceeds from the new three mil note that we issued recently of two point six million dollars is, is, is in there. So to cover the cost of the, you know, if you guys accepted the, uh, that low bid there to do the whole project, plus the remaining architect's fees, uh, to be paid based on that, uh, that low, low bid, you know, we would have to move another one point two million dollars into that fund. You know, it's a, we got two or three sources we could do that. I've got it, you know, right now budgeted to come from our building improvements fund. You know, we budgeted to have to move some money there, uh, anyway, it's a, a little more than what I had put in the budget, but also in this price, in the seven million four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, there's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar contingency cost built in there. So, you know, you wouldn't ever want to count your chickens before they hatch kind of thing, but if you didn't have a bunch of change orders or some stuff that had, that we decided to do different or whatever, you know, there could be two hundred and fifty thousand coming back to us in there. And then plus, something else to think about, with that much money sitting in that fund, we'll draw, I don't know, a good bit of interest on that money over the next year, just we're paying it out, you know, to, to the contractors, so that'll give us a little more revenue to not get on out too. So I, I think we're set up pretty good, you know, to be able to do the whole project if, if the board, um, approves it as such.
It was stated that we were going to get the phase out, so do, do you have that on hand? Because I know we were talking about the, the phases, the three different phases that we were going to have. I know this is, what you say, phase one.
This is phase one.
Right, so can you, do, do you have on hand the, the different phases as it said that we were going to have on the last meeting?
I know, one, I know we mentioned the cafeteria having to be redone and expanded as part of it.
Can you have to pull that up and, and look at it in a while, so I don't really feel like to speak to it since you didn't have it.
I'm just, I'm just kind of seeing if I'm right on, if that was part of it, I remember talking about.
Cafeteria was.
It's been a while, yeah.
And classrooms and re, remodeling classrooms on the sixth grade side, and doing some other work. The gym facility and, and work to be done in that facility and adding an additional, um, metal type room on the outside that would help with the overload of kids in the gym, you know, during the day. That's, that's a part of one of the phases.
There was another walk on in, I think, on that end, who came back out to.
That's right.
Pick up sign, yeah.
Right.
So do we have a timeframe? Um, because there, and the issue that, that I have, just speaking frankly with the board, is that legislation is about to change on how we receive funding, right, through public education. And if, I feel, through my expert opinion, that if, if we don't move and plan out accordingly now, then we're going to miss an opportunity to really help our kids. Right now, we have a little freedom, we have some things that we can do, we have the finances, that won't be the same, uh, very shortly. So I did make a motion to put it on the agenda, but it was stated last month that we were going to have the phase out, so I was just waiting until this opportunity to see what these phases were and what the timeline was going to be on the phase, because I know we're starting phase one now with the, with the face and like the seven million, like, and then how long is it going to take before phase two, and then how long is it going to take before phase three?
I think part of it, we started looking at this five, six years ago, it was right around the time when we had to put the new roof on the middle school, um, and making some improvements there and adding, adding on, and instead of building a brand new school.
Sure.
And, and doing that, and when we did, this was right before COVID, and then of course COVID hit, and then the supply chain and manufacturing and prices of everything went up. And that's why we had to back off, we couldn't do everything once like we wanted to. And so we said, all right, let's do what we got to do here first, and then, I think once we get this bid or, or this construction going, we can really look at, probably get a better idea of that next phase on when and how and do this. It's kind of hard to probably guess that right now, but, you know, I wish, you know, COVID never would have happened, we probably could have just.
Well, we were looking, the problem was that we were looking at the whole project.
We were.
As being at around eight million dollars, you know? Then all of a sudden, then we took another look after we got everything in there and ready to go, and then.
Around twelve.
It's around twelve. And so we said it's so much that we, you know, we need to be a little bit more conservative, and we were, and we watched out, we were very careful in how we spent the money, you know, that about six million dollars of money. I mean, school districts all over the state spent that money all kinds of different ways, but we didn't. We were very careful in what we did, and we wanted to make sure that it was going to go to improve the structure of what's happening in the school district, and so that's what we did.
Hey, Kevin, I, I know you made mention about, I wasn't here five, six years ago on the board, you all were making mention, this was pre-COVID, right?
Start talking.
You start talking about, but it was in the works to go ahead, and it was going to take about eight million of school funds to. What we're having, yeah, right, of course. Um, and then post-COVID or during COVID and post-COVID, uh, we got ESER money, right? So we got what, fourteen, how many, how many million, fourteen million, fifteen million? We, we know about fourteen, fifteen. Yeah, we got about fourteen to fifteen million dollars additional, so I just wanted to, and my math isn't that good, but if we were looking at spending eight million pre-COVID, then the state gave us, or the feds gave us fourteen or fifteen million, so eight and fourteen, and here we are now, then it would seem as though, just being completely transparent, it would seem as though we would have enough funds to not have to phase it out and not have an idea on when we're going to fix the facilities for our kids, uh, based on the information that I gave on last month, um, for sixty or eighty thousand dollars, I don't think, I mean, I, I don't think that, it just seems as though there is a, it's not a financial issue, Grenada doesn't have a financial issue, Grenada School District doesn't, through, uh, you know, uh, we don't have that as a problem, so I'm not understanding why, and we don't have to tear the gym down, we're just going to add to a piece of it for overflow, so why is there an issue to upgrade the facilities with the eight million? Not even, it's not going to take eight million, it doesn't take a percentage of that, maybe two percent, a percentage of that to go in and redo that, that gymnasium, um, while the other things are, are taking place? Because mark my words, we're not going to have access to these funds for long. Legislation is changing, and, and, and my, and a huge concern, public education is going to take a major, we're going to, I mean, it's, I mean, it's not hard to see it. So again, for, for us to spend, and I go back to us, you know, board working together to try to figure it out, for the board to spend three hundred thousand without even reviewing the budget, why are we picking up so much, uh, such a fight, not a fight, but why there's such resistance to have this addition while this work is going on? It wouldn't take us a hundred thousand dollars, which is a drop in the bucket if we were going to spend eight before COVID.
Well, part of that money, Rodney, this was right, you know, different things that have happened over the last five or six years with others, our other schools, elementary, upper elementary, stuff where we've spent that amount.
Well, you know, again, the, the entire addition to other schools.
Sure, sure. This project that we're, you know, evaluating tonight.
Four million, a little bit over that, so eight and four, yeah, is about twelve million or so.
So we still got three and eight, so that's eleven, so we still got.
And then some of that other money that we got in, talking about transfer some of this money from these other funds, again, that's some of that, other funding that we received, ESER received, about four million dollars, we got to kind of pay this back or some salaries from previous year.
So that was a very good thing, so that's in our fund balance, which again, allows us to be able to move that money, you know, the remaining amount at one point two million, you know, that I mentioned, that's helped us to do that. You know, one thing i- in our, in our district, we have, uh, worked to, to keep our Volarum taxes fairly low, you know, and we've had a, a, a pretty healthy fund balance, you know, but having a healthy fund balance, that's one of those things, just like we all do in our own homes, you know, it takes a while to build that up, it's just from saving, you know, over years, and you have to manage all that and be careful, because it's once you spend it, you know, it's no easy way to, to get it back. And I'll be honest with you, with some of this COVID funding that we've had, that has helped us, because we had several years that we were spending our fund balance down some every year, you know, just through the operations of our school district. And so that helped kind of put us back to where, where we were, to be honest with you, our fund balance is probably a little less now than when I came here eleven years ago. You know, and then you look at, at just how much inflation and everything, you know, as, at what all, I don't even know what the percent inflation's been in those eleven years and all, but so we really have a less money in the bank now, you know, than we did then, you know, and what it can actually buy.
Right, that's, uh, so the re, and I wasn't here during the original talks about when the roof and all that, but I was here right at COVID, when we got kind of our first estimate of the whole project being somewhere eight, and then all of a sudden after COVID, we get the new estimate, and it's like. And then all of a sudden after COVID, we get the new estimate and it's like almost doubled, it's like sticker shock. I think we looked at, you know, critically, we need the classroom space first, which makes sense to, but part of that was the cafeteria is not quite set up for that many students. I would say let's, if we wanna approve this and get the contract and then go ahead and start letting, uh, you know, getting an estimate, you know, architect, whatever, to start looking at the other two projects, at least then we'll know kinda, you know, what it is. But like I said, it shot up so much that what we thought would be another five million might be another ten or twelve again, but we don't know that at this point.
And we understand that inflation is going up. We understand that inflation is going up, and I agree with you, Mr. President, that inflation is going up and it may jump up through the roof in the next three or four years. And we're not gonna, gonna have the money that we have. So I understand being, uh, uh, fiscally responsible, uh, but also dragging our feet, um, is only gonna cause us to be farther behind. And we're not saving money at the expense of our kids. I mean, I think as a board, we can agree that we, we don't need to have millions in the bank at the, at the expense of kids. Um, so I, I mean, I'm, I'm just kinda, I'm kinda at an impasse trying to understand that, and I know you're talking about averlorum taxes, a hundred thousand dollars isn't gonna raise anybody's taxes, like not even close. Cause if it did, we wouldn't have approved three hundred thousand, but not even looking at the budget. And I don't think we understand the gravity of that, that we approved three hundred thousand just off, 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 off the bat. We never looked at the budget.
Well, you're talking about the tennis court.
Yeah, the other tennis court.
Yeah, we've been talking about that for more than six years, the problems we've had there. And we patched some of it, but it finally got to a point we couldn't patch it anymore. I mean, I think back corner, what it followed in, is that right? And I know there's some other major stuff, so that's something we had to do. But I know as far as the cafeteria, the awning and the gym, that is something we're gonna be looking at.
Yeah, I think when, like I said, I, I must get the, the main part that we know the cost of goes in front of us, kinda get that rolling. But then go ahead and let's start getting estimates and, cause like I said, we don't, we don't know right now. Right now, we will at least know what, what these other, other things.
I think some of the logistics concerns there as well, you know, to have stuff going on all over the school. Because this is gonna span this construction we're looking at tonight. It's not gonna be able to happen just in the summertime. You know, so to be able to have school in the building, you know, working on one end now, get that done, then you move them to the other end of the building and you can manage that.
So it could be done over, uh, Thanksgiving break, it could be done over Christmas break, it could be done over New Year's. So it doesn't take a construction project, it takes literally four days to put a red carpet. And also, we were told as a board that, that these plans had already been put in place and that we were gonna receive them. So I, I'm, my question is, why hadn't we received them? Uh, David, anybody? Cause that, that's what the comment was last week, that the plans are already in place, we have phase one, phase two, phase three. And why don't, if we have them, where are they? So now we don't have to get bids, we don't, we can look at it and see, okay, well, this is done, this is the price of this, this is the price of that.
Well, that's why I don't think we've got up to date pricing on any of the additional parts of it. Once we got the full price, it was so high on just that front part that we, we didn't even look at the cafeteria or anything. But I'm saying, we need to get pricing.
Yeah, yeah, but that's, but that's not what's stated though. But, but Haley, that wasn't stated. I mean, we, we were talking about a fourteen million dollar project and it was isolated in bids. Fourteen million dollar project came with ESER money, so the prices had changed pre-COVID, post-COVID. They, they maintained, if not they did some. So again, so if they were already a, a, the phases already developed, then why can't we see where the phases are? Because that's what was stated, correct?
We, we had one original plan and the price came in like paint put in sticker shop. And the architect went back and said, alright, what can we do to get our price down to around this? And he said, here's what we can do. And he's had to redo it a couple of times, cause prices have changed stuff the last few years.
So we don't really have an up to date price.
An up to date price on, on doing the other part.
We do not.
It's gonna have to be looked at again.
Yeah, we need to study it.
Or revise, it might have to be revised.
I think we need to get this project started, but then go ahead and make an, an intent to go ahead and start looking at the cafeteria and, you know, just start getting pricing and, and I, like I said, it may take twelve months for this run to get done. But at least when it's done, we may be in, in position to go ahead and, and we may could do something else earlier, but at least we'll know where the pricing is.
Ju- just to give you an example, on the newspaper building, they're looking at to draw the plans and, and remember the structure's already there. But you're talking about eight months before they could even begin any kind of work. By the time you go through the process of what you have to do. And, um, it does take time.
It takes four days to put a court down. I don't know what, what all this time we're talking about. It takes, it takes four days and about eighty thousand dollars. And again, I'm not sure, have you all been in the facility? Have y'all, have y'all seen? Have, I mean, surely, surely we can't say that, that for, for eleven, for eleven students playing tennis, and, and, and is, is Lao still here?
I'm here.
What, and what was that price? Tell me that price, was it three nineteen or four nineteen?
Three fourteen.
Three fourteen, so three hundred fourteen with, with eleven kids and we have ten, twenty, thirty.
We're getting eleven.
Fifty, fifty kids or fourteen.
Fourteen, sorry.
Fourteen, yeah, fourteen, fourteen kids. So I'm just, I'm just putting out there just a way.
Well, the
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think, and, and this is a while back when we were first looking, Rodney, I don't remember. So the court, it's got, it's got the rubberized because, and there was a reason. Had something to do with the foundation.
I could, I could speak to that.
I remember the presentation, I remember the presentation that they made, that was seen on the, on the bottom side, you know, had just kinda shifted, kinda was falling like
I'm not talking about, I'm talking about the basketball.
Oh, oh?
I'm talking about the basketball, it's got a rubber eye, cause it used to have a wooden floor on it. And, and they had to put four boys' dark back on.
It was, now this
Yes, I can't remember.
This has happened, thi- this actually happened back when, when, um, Mr. Carson was athletic director and Dr. Pender. Um, we had, we had a, um, a wooden court.
Right.
Okay? The problem was that it kept flooding. They replaced it two or three times, according to our former business manager. They replaced it two or three times because it would flood. So it's not as simple as you're saying, we can go in and put a court down. We have all kinds of elevations that we have to deal with. Otherwise, we're gonna face the same problems with the gym floor flooding if it's a wooden floor. Now, they, they use, they use that floor, they use that room every day. The kids all go into the gym and they're walking around on that floor. Now, how would the hardwood stand to that? That is the reason that they went to the surface that is a rubberized surface. And that was done years and years ago. And ever since that's been put down, they've never replaced it. It's never, the floor has never been replaced since that time. But they did replace the wooden floor two or three times and I'm sure that, um, Dr. Pender would remember how many times we actually replaced it. But it would flood. And when it would flood, then we would have that issue. If, if you notice around the middle school, if you go by there and take a look, right after a big rain, we have a lot of work that's gonna have to be done to get water away from the building. And, um, if you go by and take a look, and we gotta make sure that the elevations are right so that we, when we do something, that it's not gonna be ruined.
I may now go back to getting the plans right.
Yeah, get it right, study it, yeah. And this was a part of the, this was a part of the design, a part of the plan of how do you do this? Do you, do you need to put a wooden floor down? Do you need to put a rubber floor? I don't know. I don't know.
And we talked about the, the addition for TIs and that may be
And what, what purpose does it serve? And what about that other little area that we talking about building? You know, I mean, how would, how would that fit into this? And so that area, what we talking about building it right next to the gym is definitely, would definitely be underwater. So that has all got to be built up and we gotta deal with that and how to get the water away from the building.
Okay, we need to go ahead and make a motion on this, uh, for the classroom, basically the additional classrooms, uh, in the front parking and all that we put the bid on.
But, but, but before you say that, I'm gonna say this last thing. Well, we just made a, a lot of excuses as to why we can't service our kids. Because if I remember correctly, when it was, when it was presented to us about the tennis court, that that place has been falling in since the beginning of time. And we kept doing stuff to it and it kept crumbling, we kept doing things to it and it kept crumbling. That's what was stated, correct? That, that we had put money into it, but it kept breaking apart on the backside and, um, and but, but we found, we found a solution, right? We found a solution on how to keep it from, from, from sinking. I- i- is, is that not correct? Isn't that, was, wasn't that the presentation? That, that we were spending money there, but it kept crumbling down because whoever said it a long time ago, they brought some old concrete in and they just kinda piecemealed it together. So, and then, and then they finally, is, is that not what was supposed to be? So the, the tennis court was perfectly fine and it just happened just to fall down on its side. That, that's not what was stated. It was stated that we were having continuous problems with the tennis court. And this is a sure solution, quote unquote, based on all the places around the America that, that use these people to say, we do this, 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 this is how you rectify this problem, right? That, that was my understanding on the presentation. So why can't we have that same resolve on, on, on fixing an issue uh, when it comes to that middle school court and that, and that high school facility? Because we found, there's an answer. It, 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 it's not a question, we, we can find an answer, there's an answer for everything. So I just, I just, I just wanna, I just wanna put it out there, Hal. I just, I just wanna, just put it out there.
Get this one out of the way.
Yes, sure.
Make a motion to accept this bid for seven million, four forty-five, uh, for K T builders. And I would say make the motion for the complete project, um, add alternate one and two, which that's the total for that.
Question? Kevin, you got a second? Dr. Brazel? Uh, all in favor? Unanimous? And you'll have, probably have a contract next, next month. Alright, uh, item eight is the Golden Lamp Award.
Good evening. Glad to have everyone here tonight. Today, we have the privilege of recognizing an extraordinary accomplishment within our district. Dr. David Dagnall, superintendent of Grenada School District, has been awarded the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Golden Lamp Award by the Mississippi Association of School Administrators. This distinguished award honors exemplary leadership and an unwavering commitment to advancing education across Mississippi. The Golden Lamp Award is presented only to those whose work has led to transformative outcomes for students, educators, and communities alike. Dr. Dagnall now joins a respected legacy of past recipients, educational leaders whose dedication to excellence has created lasting impact throughout the state. Being recognized with this award reflects not only Dr. Dagnall's personal contributions, but also the collective effort and spirit of our entire district. Throughout his career, Dr. Dagnall has fostered an environment that emphasizes teamwork, innovation, and shared success. His approach centers on the belief that great strides in education are only possible when the entire community works together. By empowering teachers, engaging families, and building partnerships within the community. Dr. Dagnall has led initiatives that prioritize student well-being, equitable access to resources, and academic success for all. This recognition is a testament to Dr. Dagnall's belief in the power of we. It represents the dedication of our teachers, staff, administrators, and every member of our community who contrib- contributes to creating a safe, nurturing, and opportunity-filled environment for our students. Together, we celebrate this achievement, proud of what it reflects about our district and inspired to continue the work of shaping the future of education in Mississippi. On behalf of the board and the Grenada community, we extend our heartfelt congratulations to Dr. David Dagnall for his well-deserved recognition. His work serves as an inspiring reminder of what we, of what can be achieved when we strive toward a common vision with compassion, integrity, and collaboration. Dr. Dagnall.
I can tell you that, that the work that has been done in order for us to receive this award, and I'm not saying me, I'm saying us, is all of the people in Grenada working together for years and years in order to make this happen. And so we are very, very proud and I'm honored to be here and accepting this. Thank you so very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Declaration of Jonathan Surplus items. Got a motion, is it? All in favor? Unanimous? Alright, item J is deletion of
Jonathan Surplus from last month.
I make a motion, prove the deletion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Alright, uh, review of the financial statements, activity, fund, transactions.
As I say, I have four different reports there, for the month of, of September thirty. First, the minimum book balance and cash in the bank. And I'm a little light there. And then, you know, keep in mind that that balance has that money that we're gonna be using for the middle school construction and also the money that we have there for the, the three million dollars that we're receiving on high schools that are free, um, free this year. And that is in that balance. So that's all earmarked for those purposes. And of course, next month, we also, again, money that we received on, what, September thirty fifteen. Look at the cash flow statement, the next one there. You know, part of this, oh, that's like, really, it's like history maintenance. For this time of year, you know, y'all heard me say this time before, we kinda overspend ourselves typically month to month, except for the months of, you know, June, where, where we're in March when our avaleran tax comes in. And so one part of this is, despite none of us can do this cash flow, uh, statement is to kinda help the board see to know, because some boards, again, you get down there and payrolls are, uh, significant. You know, our, our school district, this last month, the payroll and benefits was two million, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. You know, you get funded every month for that, but again, this time of year, you have to, it goes, it costs you more than what you're getting from the state each month. So some school districts, they'll get real close and it's a way to be able to monitor that and see if it'd be necessary to have, um, tax or anticipation of the issue and those kinds of things. We'll say this, our auditors have, have been in and, and out, and they've gished up the second phase of a field work here a few weeks ago. So they've earned anything out of them in the last couple of weeks. So I think they're probably working on an audit report for this year. So we got a pretty good jump on that. And, uh, we have, that's earned a year's worth of them, as, as far as we are on that. Any questions about any of the statements there?
Do you have one?
Our attorney, we'll jump so high.
The last one, we, we didn't
Uh, uh, we do have one, Mary's got a, a schedule. We did go back and look at that, yes. And, uh, for the last, uh, y'all could like to turn around and, uh, Mary helped put this together. And you said with our legal things, that's back through, these are actually
And you see with our legal fees, that's back through, these are actually calendar years that we're looking at. You see, back in twenty-one, our total legal fees were a little less than nineteen thousand. But the purple, that's Adam and Reese, and the black is the Young Law Group. Young Law Group typically not a whole lot, they were doing some of the filings with the IRS and the O B. So, that's usually a pretty small part of our, uh, legal fees, except for years when we have some special events. So, you look in twenty-two, that's when we had, uh, uh, the Abilera tax was short that year. And we had to do a shortfall note. And so, it was a little more, uh, for Young, and Young Law Group that year, so it was up to twenty thousand. Then last year, it was thirty-five thousand, with, again, the majority of that being Adam and Reese. And then this is the most recent year that we're in, up through this board meeting tonight, and what's on the claims document tonight, hundred and twelve thousand. Now, again, just like we had in twenty-two, where we had to pay some additional legal fees for that tax anticipation note, there are some additional fees this year. The Young Law Group, why this is a bigger part of that bar in twenty-four is because of our three mil note that we issued. You know, we had, had another note like that, I think the last one was done in two thousand and six. So, that's kind of an extraordinary expense, you know, that we wouldn't normally have. But again, everything else is just going to be the, uh, you know, the services that's been provided by our attorneys through the year. And this year is kind of a new year.
Clearly, so you're saying the Young Law Group does the bond, right? You said they, they need the bond, so, uh, the specific question was, uh, so that, that's the reason it jumped on the Young side? So, why did Adams and Reese jump up so high last month?
Again, like I said, it's been, they're just the hours that they're doing this for the, the, the service that they're providing. And also through the year, it, it's all district ministry administrators, as things arise, you're confronted with different things. You know, there are, are board attorneys that, it's caused, and they, and they work on different issues also.
So, but that seems like an extraordinary jump from, from, from a three-year, uh, like from twenty-one to twenty-first, it's like an extraordinary jump.
It is, it's, it's vastly different. I, I, I will say, can I add one thing that makes it a, just a little better, not, not much? But, uh, again, the Adams and Reese also in our, uh, the three mil note offering, they were also our loan counsel. You know, that was, they worked alongside Young Law Group. So, in there, it was seventy, you know, service charge.
Seventy-five?
Seventy-five hundred dollars from, from Adams and Reese. So, that would come off. So, if you look, it, it wasn't, have, have, this year, the Adams and Reese, outside of that seventy-five hundred, is seventy-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars.
And, and I don't know every situation, but I know we had a, a staff member that was, I don't think, I won't name any names, but we had some particular, like, unusual deal that they probably had to spend some, some time on, directing us how to handle that.
Yeah, and, and, and the financial, like, the money isn't the issue, but again, as a board, I think we, if we're setting policy, if, if we, if we set policy, then we have to know, it behooves us to know where money is being allocated, so we can direct policy towards that to eliminate that cost. So, it's not, it's not, it is keeping up with where the money is going for our taxpayers, but it's also to help us as a board direct, how do we, how do we, um, how do we manage policy? How do we change a, a, a policy for, uh, for the school, you know? So, if we're having a lot of increasing legal bills because of whatever, then I think our policy should reflect a change to eliminate whatever that concern may be.
Part of it too, with, you know, we've had, you know, Mr. Keith and our attorneys here at every meeting this year, compared to the past, not every meeting. And that's part of it too, but Dr. Dagnall, I mean, there, I know there's other things that, I mean, this year has been a little bit different.
Yeah, I mean, you, you know, I think it's very clear. You know, if you look at, look at the years, and you could see, granted, things have gone up. Inflation has hit us to some level. But, you know, if, if you went back historically over the years, you would see numbers that were much more common, like in twenty-one, twenty-two, you know, about twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Now, all of a sudden, a spike where we're spending eighty-five thousand, you know, in a year. And by the way, the year's not over, okay? This is from January of this past year, okay? The year's not over. Now, one thing that we have done is we have a board attorney who is at every meeting now. We do, and that was something that you wanted to put in place, well, we have it. Well, we have a lot of communication that takes place with our board attorneys, because we want to make sure that we're doing everything the best way we possibly can. I wish I could tell you that that number is going to go down over the next three or four years. I hope it does.
You'll be coming on it, I'll be happy to talk to you.
Sure, yeah.
You know, we as lawyers, and, excuse me, we, we represent about twenty-five school districts around the state. We represent the largest school district in the state, we represent the smallest school district in the state. Uh, and the way we do that is we try to be efficient in what we do. We never pick up the phone and call you and say, hey, what can we do for you today to bill you for more legal time? I've never done that in my life, I never will do that. We respond to legal needs that are generated in a school system, much of which has nothing to do with policy, but has to do with people filing complaints, by people becoming involved in legal issues. And our job is to, first of all, try to prevent you from getting into legal trouble through the board training that, that we do and the, and the individual training that we do, um, such as the Title IX training that my partner has done, that Elizabeth has done, and so on. Um, I spent six hours today doing training for a bunch of superintendents in the North Mississippi Education Consortium, which was free of charge to anybody who wants to jump online and hear that. And it was all about, uh, trying to, um, make sure that we don't make personnel decisions that generate legal fees and things of that nature. Our job is to keep your legal fee as low as you possibly can, because every dollar you spend on a lawyer is one less dollar that you spend on children. So, you're never going to find us trying to generate legal fees, so I promise you, I got more work that I can handle, and I, I would love for it to slow down sometimes. But, uh, but, but we are there to help you, whether it's a board member that calls us or, or typically you, because obviously, uh, you know, you don't let just everybody pick up the phone and call the lawyer. Uh, we don't do that, we don't accept those kind of calls. So, so that's the way we work. Um, unfortunately, um, and I'll, I will say this generally across the board, uh, as, uh, after COVID, we have seen a big spike, uh, nationally in terms of legal fees and personnel issues and personnel problems. Um, uh, that's not just here in Mississippi, but it's everywhere. I go to the national conferences and we talk about those kind of things. And you think about all the issues and things that the employee rights and so on. And employees are not shy to, uh, to file lawsuit. And so, when that happens, you know, you've got to defend yourself. So, that's what we do, and, uh, we try to be as efficient as we possibly can.
And, and we appreciate your turn, Keith. And, and again, we appreciate you being here to keep aside of those issues. But, it, because the board, and again, I'm speaking to the board, because this is a board meeting, is, is the fact that we have two employees, David and Attorney Keith. Those are, are only two employees. And if, if as an employer, I don't know why an employee's money is changing. I think that, that, that serves as a concern. I know David makes two hundred and thirty-something, twenty-something, thirty-something thousand dollars a year. I know that if his money came up and it was two seventy, then I think, hey, what happened? Why is there increase in travel? Why is there increase? Because I have two people that we have been elected to govern, that's Attorney Keith and David. So, again, my question is, if it's because he's here, he, David alluded to the fact that, that Attorney Keith is, is present at every meeting that has caused almost a forty thousand dollar, forty-five thousand dollar jump? No, fifty thousand dollar jump in attorney's fees, then maybe we need to look at if his presence being here costs us fifty thousand?
I'd be happy to call in. I'd be happy to do anything, I promise you that.
Then, then, then maybe we need to look at a different thing. So, again, I think it's only fair for, for the board to know if, I mean, if they're just, you know, phone calls that they're being called. And again, maybe we love him, so, you know. I got a lot of respect for you as a attorney.
Yes, about this. This, this is a, a legitimate question that nobody i- is, is offended by, because I, I want y'all to be comfortable with your legal fees. I have board members who will come in and sit down, you know, with the, the board attorney or the superintendent, and, and who will categorize the areas of where the legal fees are. And we can break it down between student matters, personnel matters, things of that nature. And I don't, I'm, I'm not bashful at all about that. We have to be very careful that we don't articulate it in such a way that we give away attorney-client privileged information. But, but I'll be, you know, that, that's an easy analysis for us to show you where the legal fees are generating. And I can tell you, from what I know about legal fees and representing school districts, personnel is your number one expense.
Well, and that's more, I, I brought that, and I didn't want to name individuals that we hadn't had. And that's just one, and there's probably been several that, you know, get, get calls to.
And when you get into litigation too, uh, and, excuse me, but when you get into litigation, it just, the, the cost is skyrocketing. I can promise you, my being here has not contributed to that. I haven't seen any more money come for it, I promise you that, so.
And, and, and that was the question I was going to say, just like, you know, the, the comment that I made as far as that breakdown of analysis to say, okay, if it's coming from personnel or if it's coming from student matters, then when we as a board come together to direct policy, and then it's something that we pull in and say, hey, look, yeah, then, then, you know, maybe,
I say you do enough to like that.
Maybe we should tighten up on whatever that category is, because it's costing us X amount of dollars.
And we shouldn't show that.
Because we, as a school district, we are data-driven, correct? Everything is data-driven, it shouldn't be emotional-driven, it should be data-driven. So, that's, that was the reason for that, for that comment. I mean, of course, I mean, I think you, you're the best in the, in the state.
But you don't have to go that far.
Well, you know, I believe it, I do, I believe in business, behind my wife.
Yeah, all right, you better make that correction.
So, uh, any more discussion? We need to, uh, file or receive any financial statements?
I think as much we file and receive.
Got a second? Any other discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? All right. Item L, so we actually have three, uh, citizens, uh, signed up for public comment. I'm going to go over kind of the, the public comment, uh, policy. So, public comments are obtained from members of the public to briefly express their ideas, concerns, and suggestions to the school board on matters of individual and community interest. Public comments are limited to three minutes per individual. Um, in order to address comments to the board, individuals must sign in at the beginning of the meeting, which we have to read, uh, address the order, and address the board in order of sign-in. So, I will call each person up. Uh, we limit this to ten people per meeting. The public comment is not a time, is not a forum for in-depth discussion on issues with the board, nor is it a public discussion. Rather, it's a time for the public may use to make the board aware of matters related to student achievement or school operations. The board will not debate any issues raised through public comments. Um, that's pretty much the gist of it. So, um, we'll do three minutes, and I'll have to start.
Mary, do you have a tongue?
I did it.
Oh, okay. All right, so, okay, uh, you wait as she gets up there. Um, we have Ms., uh, Ms. Brown, Ms. Gloria Brown is first.
Sit up, man.
You good?
I say my name, Gloria Brown. I want to address my grandson. You know, I'll be remembering the time we was in school, we had teachers that have, would parent to kids. It's like, it's like right now, it's like kids in second, first grade, getting put out of school at a young age for talking. I feel like back then, we had, that teacher made us read books and write reports and more activity for the kids, instead of stereotype those kids, putting them out of school. I feel like the teachers don't have patience no more. Usually when we go to school, our teacher become our parents. What, what happened? That, it's like everybody was, like, the school, the teacher losing, like, okay, this child is bad, he talk too much. Children don't talk. They need more activity in the school at a young age. From first grade, you can't, putting kids out of school, I ain't never heard of that. When we was going to school, we get pounding at school, we teach without parent. Because we had eight hour with our, with those kids, y'all had eight hour. What happened to them when we were coming up? I feel like I always say to them, God never changed. The rules for children should never change, but I know that they need to be disciplined. But putting a child out of school for talking in class for two days or, or we, I think y'all need to just go back and kind of evaluate this kind of thing for these kids. Because the, the children are our future, we getting older now, that, and this is a public school. I just feel like the school, y'all didn't need to talk to the teacher, and interview the teacher, do they have patience for the children? Find a solution instead of work with the parent. I know sometimes parents work all day and we don't have time, you know, to do a lot of stuff. But, for me, I, I'm a grandparent. And today, I, I've got upset, I came to talk to Ms., Ms. Harris. And she's, you know, my daughter didn't come to be here because they got other kids. You know, parents sometimes ain't able to come to a certain meeting. I'm a grandmother, and not my well-being is for my child, get, my grandson get put out of school for talking. I think some ain't right. Teachers don't have patience no more. What happened? Y'all need to evaluate the teacher. Teacher need to take time out with these children, you know? Back then, when we were going to school, they made over you, we had to write a thousand times, my finger was hurting. They, they do chores at the school, you know what I'm saying? Those kids got a lot of energy. Have activity for those kids. Have somebody to point for these children instead of putting them out of school. Instant school suspension for first grade, kindergarten, first, come on. Some ain't right. If you gonna put a child out of school, put him out of school for bringing a weapon to school, suspension and stuff like that. Stuff like for talking.
Just question, what grade, what, what age?
He's first grade.
First.
First grade. He getting, getting instant school suspension. I know he talk, that's the key. He very hot.
We have it and sharing, and sharing with us, and we would definitely take that, uh, you know, into consideration. But we appreciate you.
We have that information, you know.
All right. Um, next we have, uh, Ms., Ms. Turner, Audrey Turner.
Good evening. I almost, uh, changed my mind about addressing the board, I feel like it's a monumental waste of time. On Friday, around three o'clock, my son and I, Dr. Turner, were together in a vehicle in bus number ninety-eight, who was stopped at a stop sign. When we turned the corner in front of the National, the old National Guard armory, she took off. And had we not been turning, she would have keboned us. I was in the car with Dr. Turner, who was driving. And I looked around and I could almost see her face in rage as she entered the intersection. He stopped and she gunned the, that, uh, bus with children on it. I'm a thirty-one-year insurance professional who handled automobile claims. There was no contact. But had there been contact, it would have been devastating. I was a nervous wreck for about an hour or more after that happened. I am told that that footage was reviewed. And as customary, the victim or the recipient of that road rage was blamed for stopping. My son got out of the car and approached the bus because he was concerned about the driver and those children. He didn't know man or woman, but he was concerned about the driver and the children. He asked me to move my, the vehicle up, and when I did, she took opportunity to speed off. In insurance, there's a thing called sincere utterance. He was standing at the bus driver's window. She did not open, which is fine, safety reason. But typically with sincere utterance, a driver will make a statement, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, or why did you stop? Or I was looking for my phone and I hit you. I am told that her response was, Dr. Turner is trying to get me fired. A sincere utterance, not. A sincere utterance, not why did he stop in front of me, why did that happen? And I'm not looking for this board to offer any kind of understanding, because I've seen what you do with the truth. You'd rather have a chokehold on your assumed authority and power than to do something about the truth. We tell our children that they are to be honest, and they are to be respectful, but we as adults seem to have forgotten those lessons that our parents taught us.
Amen.
Thank, thank you for that, Ms. Turner, and, and every bit of that was, was definitely the, the truth. I, I think, Dr. Brasswell, you, um, I think last meeting, you asked me to, like, come to you privately, or say something privately. And in turn, I did just that to keep things from being in the public. I, I called, I called Benji, I called David, and, and I was pretty much blamed for the, for the, for the brunt of the responsibility.
We gonna have a discussion about this?
Well, technically, we're not supposed to.
I'm not, I'm not discussing, I'm, I'm, I'm talking to a board me, I'm talking to a board member in a board meeting. And again, a- and again, I did exactly as I was asked to do, right? To show some type of, um, I guess you, you would say camaraderie, some type of agreeableness to try to resolve an issue. I even said it, that I didn't want anything done, I was, I said, when I made the call, I said, I just wanted to make sure that every, everybody was okay, because it was kinda, it was kinda strange, it was kinda bizarre that it happened. And I came today to, to look at the video, and it showed exactly what went on. Um, and basically, I was admonished for stopping my vehicle, and they didn't see anything wrong with, with what happened. Um, and, and, and I think it just goes to show the, the level that we will go not to be agreeable. Because I did, and I said, I, I didn't even wanna come see the video, but I was told, I, Benji, that I brake-checked the bus. You all know what brake-check means, don't you? Brake-check, like, somebody's on you, slam on your brakes to make somebody hit you. That was not ever seen on the video. So again, we, we are building a narrative, that even though, I, I made phone call, I think Kevin, I would tell you, I text him, hey, look, let's go out and have lunch, or, I mean, I know he wasn't available for lunch, but, I mean, I called, hey, I texted him, hey, can we do breakfast? To, to try to see how can we work as a board to move forward to get some things resolved. And I understand Kevin was busy in class during that Friday or Thursday, I can't remember what day it was. But, but when, when we bring issues, we're bringing valid issues to the board, and and again, i- if it were your, if it were your hundred-year-old mother, and you in the car together, and, and a bus was gonna T-bone you, then, then what, what would you do? I mean, and then, not only T-bone you, but then when you pull off, the bus runs right on top of your back. You know, I said, that's something, and you have kids on this bus. We just had a two-bus car accident, so, again, that, that's, that, that's where that was coming from. So I wanted to show that I did do exactly as you requested on the last meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Turner. Um, let's see, we got, uh, one more for, for three minutes, um, Ms. Davis, is that right? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here, um, I'm here on behalf of Grenada School District of State, my opinion. And I don't, I don't expect everybody to agree with what I'm about to say, but I'm gonna speak my opinion anyway.
Oh, 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 I don't know what she's talking about, no, I'm sorry.
Well, that's, employee, you're an employee?
Yes, an employee for Constodian.
Is that?
Well, I'm no longer working for the Grenada School District, now I was an employee for Constodian.
Oh, is this executive, that's what he's saying, should it be executive session?
No, she has a right to speak public comment.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know what she's gonna say.
I don't either, so, well, I'm making sure.
I didn't know it.
Okay, so, what I was gonna say is that I started out working in the Grenada School District in February of twenty-twenty-three, had been working for like a year and five months all together in the Grenada School District. For food services, I started out as substitute. So I moved to Constodian because I saw that they had a full-time position. And I thought, you know, that was what was best for me and my family, you know, because they had a full-time spot in food service and having a thing full-time. So, I had left food service, started working for Constodian, and I was only working for Constodian for like a month and a half. So, I feel like I was discriminated, because it cost me my job, because I was clocking out at two o'clock, going to get my daughter off the first grade hall. Which other people that were employees, they, they would do the same thing, get their children off the hall, but nothing was said about it. But I was the one that was called out for getting my daughter off the hall. And I just feel like it was unfair, I feel like I was getting picked on, because why not address the other people that, that were doing the same thing that I was doing? And on top of it, it was like, oh, we didn't know about this, we'll have to address this, yes, you knew about it, 'cause you would see them, and would be looking at them going to the, on the halls, getting the children. So when I stated that, you know, which I was, like I said, I was called in the office one time, told about it. And I just feel, like I said, I feel like I was called out, because other employees were doing this exact same thing, going on the halls, getting their kids as well. And I've known employees in the Grenada School District to state their, their opinions about things, and they would get, get options whether they wanted to go to other buildings, if it didn't work out at another building. But I didn't get that option, I just, I got the option to sign the resi- resignation form. And I was upset at the time, when I, you know, didn't look at it. And Ms. Cortez Evans, the, the owner of Constodian, she did not go over the paper, she didn't explain the paper or none of it. And I feel like it was unfair, because I've seen other workers go to other buildings, get the options to go to other buildings, but I didn't get that opportunity to do that. And like I said, I don't expect everybody to agree with me, but I am gonna state my opinion and how I feel about it, because it was wrong. It was wrong. And I feel like they got, they picked some certain people, and they gonna agree and ride with each other, knowing they in the wrong. They still gonna ride with each other to the end.
And, uh, we greatly appreciate you coming and voicing this concern, and this is something that, that the board, we will take into consideration to see, you know, what, what really went on, um, and, and we appreciate you coming. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, do we have? Need a motion for the bills? Now, a motion, need a second? Dang it, all in favor of paying the bills? You gonna pay the bills? Uh, anything in executive session?
Nothing.
No? All right, need a motion for, for adjourned? Second, all in favor of adjourned? All right, thank you.